My question to the House of Representatives, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Richard here. Adrian. Juanita. Here. Ernie. Here. Uh, this is a public, uh, public meeting, public hearing. Um, we only have one item on this agenda, and it's the discussion of ordinance zero one dash two thousand nineteen. And that's been appealing municipal code chapter, uh, eleven personnel policy, chapter eleven, our personal personnel merit system, chapter eleven exhibit A pay scale, chapter eleven exhibit B performance appraisal, chapter eleven exhibit C drug and alcohol policy two thousand nineteen, and chapter eleven exhibit D town vehicle policy. So, the reason that we are doing this is we are, uh, we're filling them from ordinance and we're gonna, we adopt all these two, in the regular meeting, we're gonna adopt all these two resolutions. The reason is because of the ordinance, you have to do the whole, um, advertising, and so we can't really change it, and these are living documents. So these need to actually be changed quite often, not often, but I mean, we, we do change them a lot. So, if we put them as a resolution, then we just give them to council, we make the changes, and then it becomes a resolution. So the reason that we're, um, doing these is to take them out of being an ordinance, and then we'll adopt them in regular council meeting tonight as a resolution. Any questions?
No, just follows up with the last one.
Motion?
There's no discussion.
No, it's just discussion, I'm a play out to the representation, sorry. No discussion even? Okay, the other motion goes on. Second by Richard, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ford. Ernie. Ford. Alright, now let's go on to the public meeting order, this is a regular time council meeting. We have one at a time.
My question to the House of Representatives, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. So four on the board, minutes on regular. Major Cal on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Make the motion for the defense from regular Major Cal on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Adrian with the motion, one to go with the second, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ernie. Motion passes, approval of tonight's agenda for April second, two thousand nineteen.
Make motion for the agenda for April second, two thousand nineteen.
Good dinner. Yeah, motion by Adrian, excuse me, the second by Richard, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ernie. Ford. Okay, motion passes. Alright, tonight, I mean, the first item on the agenda is what we're gonna, what we discussed in the public hearing, um, approval of repeal of ordinance, uh, of ordinance zero one, two thousand nineteen, which is the repeal of, uh, everything we discussed in public, in public hearing tonight. Do I have a motion, or is that current discussion?
We gotta continue talking about it, right?
Oh, yeah, well, well, what we do is this is just a repeal of it, and then each one we do, uh,
Make a motion to approve the ordinance, zero one, two thousand nineteen, repealing.
Actually, or just ordinance oh one. Okay. Motion by Adrian, the second by Juanita, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ford. Ernie.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so explain this to me, since I was against it last time, I know that, you know, what, what is the actual regular process here? You know, I know you asked, but as I was reading, I was developing that question.
Of what?
So, I was against it last time, I'm, you know, I'm still on it for it now, I mean, I know it's moving on, I'm voting on it tonight, so this is a weird spot for me, I thought that was done, you know? And I, I get it, now like, you, you expect, why would that be here?
Oh, you're talking about the drug and alcohol?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know? And I thought that was done, but we're here to move on tonight.
Yeah, so, when we approved it last time?
Uh huh.
It's as a, as an ordinance, which ordinance is different from the resolution.
Right.
So what we're doing is we're reappealing everything, all of those items as ordinances, because they're so hard to change, and each of these are living documents, and we should be, should be updating them yearly at least. So, what we're doing is we're reapproving them tonight as resolutions, so that way we can bring the council and make a change, rather than having to advertise and having to go jump through so many hoops to make any change at all.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Okay, motion passes. Uh, item number nine, approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash zero eight, town mountain air personnel policy. So, we are gonna be, okay, so let me actually. So let me explain each of these, um, right now, so this is not the end of it. Right now, me and Phyllis, I know we're back from working on the personnel policy, me and her going through and making changes. The reason we're doing this right now is so that when we bring those changes, it's a lot easier to change, we don't have to jump through the hoops. So just because we're reapproving it tonight, like the personnel policy, we'll reapprove it, it, it keeps the same personnel policy that we have on file right now, as a resolution, but we will be changing that here soon with some added changes that we're, that we're gonna be doing. So me and Phyllis are, for instance, on personnel policy, me and Phyllis are actually working on that right now, for, uh, we've got to import them to develop as well, on different things, on how to add, you know, what, what to remove or to add, things like that. So, this isn't gonna be the last that you see it, and so I don't want you to see it and then be like, oh, we did this last meeting, and we did this last meeting. Yes, this is just part of the process, we're just making it easier for us to change it, and then at the next meeting, we won't change it.
Yeah, I was gonna say you'll bring it to me and then say what the changes are, right?
Right, yes, we're gonna go through, I'm actually gonna bring the old policy and the new policy, and I wanna go through, and the new policy will have everything highlighted as to what to change it, so you will go through it and see the yellows and say, okay, this was added, this was added, this was removed, kind of thing.
And I was gonna suggest put strikeouts through.
Yes.
Okay, I get it, yeah.
So this is approving the one that we already have, right now, we have our current policy, well, technically right now we don't need to, um, remove it, but, but what this does, this number nine, will put it back with that personnel, but as a resolution, not as an ordinance. Any questions?
Now you answer, fine, please. Well, that's, that's why I asked you, you'll bring the changes to the next meeting, instead of rather us, you asked them this night, and then all of a sudden you guys handing us changes and saying, that's it, you voted on it last time, we didn't know what they were.
And the reason we didn't bring it, um, the reason we didn't bring it, the changes to date this meeting, because this is already gonna be a long meeting, we have executive session and all of this stuff, and I mean, that's like getting on here at eleven, if I was to add those, we would've got it out like at one, so, item goes out, but it'll be at the next meeting, as long as we had, well, the focus for the salt. So personnel policy, the one that we have on file right now, this just reaffirms it, it just makes it as a resolution, as a ordinance. Do I have a motion, or do you have any more questions?
I don't have no questions, then we see 'em. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen oh eight, town mountain air personnel policy.
The second.
Motion by Adrian, the second by Juanita, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Okay, this one is the approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash zero nine, the town mountain, uh, personnel policy, article two, personnel merit system. So, each, and within, uh, not within, but we have several different, uh, parts of this personnel policy, this is article two, which concerns the merit system that we have with the town.
If you guys approve this, this is gonna prove to the one that we already have on file. Basically, it says that we follow merit, not favoritism. No, uh, we, we hire on merit, not for favoritism.
Merit means you hire with them, right?
No, merit means we hire the best qualified applicant, not the. Not the candidate. Unless, your best qualified candidate.
Well, we're gonna look at it, we think, we think, we think, we think, well, the goal of this is to update our, our, our items, when was the last time this was updated? I mean, I know that one, uh, drug and alcohol was two thousand and eighteen, but a lot of these haven't been actually updated in, in a couple years, so, we wanna just, tonight's just changing it so we can make changes more easily, and keep them as resolutions.
Okay.
I know it's confusing, but. But we will see all of these individually, as we make the changes over the next couple meetings.
So these are with the very same wording that exists.
Exact same right now, everything that we have on, on right now, it's just, it's as an ordinance, it's just approving it tonight, just moves it to a resolution, yes.
Make a motion to approve our resolution twenty nineteen dash nine, town mountain air, uh, personnel policy, uh, merit system.
Jeff Gunnar. Motion by Juanita, the second by Richard, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ford. Ernie. Ford. Okay, approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, town mountain air personnel policy exhibit C drug and alcohol policy two thousand nineteen. So this just reapproves the, um, uh, personnel policy exhibit C drug and alcohol policy as a resolution. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen, drive change, town mountain air personnel policy exhibit C drug and alcohol policy.
The second. Motion by, uh, Richard, the second by Adrian, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ernie. Again. Approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash eleven, town mountain air, town policy exhibit D, town vehicle policy. Now, this is not the police department policy, this is our non-police department policy, so this is the vehicles dealing with the maintenance, um, and with other vehicles.
Why aren't they both in here?
They are.
Oh, they are?
Number thirteen is the police department.
And make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen eleven, town mountain air personnel policy exhibit D, town vehicle policy.
The second.
Yeah, motion by Adrian, the second by Juanita, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ford. Ernie. Ford. Okay, and next item, approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash twelve, town mountain air personnel policy exhibit E, police department vehicle policy, so this is, um, what we just discussed, and we just approved another part of it.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen twelve, town mountain air personnel policy exhibit E, police department vehicle policy.
The second.
Make a motion by Adrian, the second by Juanita, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ernie. Ford. Alright, motion passes. Alright, now we have done with that, approval to sell ambulance.
Is Carol, uh?
Uh, I don't know.
Yes, she was.
Wait, one moment. Did you reach out?
Um. Um, like, we can talk about it. You have folks?
I don't.
Anyways, uh, this is the other, the Ford, nineteen ninety-four Ford CTV, uh, it's unknown mileage, because it won't start, but it's approximately seventy-eight thousand, uh, doesn't meet the safety has, standards as an ambulance, but it's still usable as a, a vehicle or a box truck, if somebody gets it started. And they, they're requesting they can sell it off so they can make room in their ambulance barn, you go ahead and, uh, get another one, you have anything to say about this, or do you know anything else?
No, that's basically it.
And that's, basically, it makes room for a new one. So do we need, like, decide on a, like, a price tonight, or? It's up to your choice, I mean, yeah, we know what it'd be. Like, Ford? I mean, previously, we had the options, yeah, with an auction.
Actually, I would've been an auction, so I'm pretty sure that for me, they'll talk, I believe, so, we would just auction it off, 'cause I mean, I don't think you're gonna get a lot, I mean, you know, like, I don't think you'd, like, really set a price for one of those, I don't know if anyone really knows, like, what. What was the emergency, the panda? Goat. Sorry, so I really think, uh, if we did like a. An auction, or just go off, I was really hoping there were probably.
Yeah, just the only thing I have to say, if we're gonna auction it, uh, uh, we need to debad everything, you know, we gotta take off mountain air, we gotta take off license plates, because the last time we auctioned, there was people with license plates still there around, there's people with town and mountain air, still on the vehicles, and, uh, I mean, it just kinda. And everything had. I don't know if that, did they ever get, you know?
It did, yes.
Yeah. I've got, you got two of them, I've got a third, and, um, I think three more, two more coming in. Burns, got, uh, burns up.
She's not.
I got those greens up, you have the burns, the greens, we'll be bringing them in.
Carol's not on three checks, or?
It's up to you guys, if you guys wanna table it, or if you guys wanna do, I don't know what Carol, I have. I was under the impression she just wants to table it.
Yeah, she just wants to, we can get rid of it.
Put it space.
Yeah, it's true.
So we could do it as a resol, as a, not a resolution, sorry, as a, um, auction. And we just advertise and have people show up and, and buy a dinner ticket?
If we're gonna have an auction, which is for our department ambulance, I feel that, if they have any other things, that they need to get rid of an auction, so they do like a, 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 one here, one there.
Carrie, you got anything else over there, if our department needs to auction?
Um.
What about the snow pump? Did you get a snow pump?
I think we still have that, yeah, we tried to put it back on our truck and it didn't work, so.
Oh, we never.
I think there's a few things back there.
Who wants to out to the town, love? Georgia Black. She's texting me back, so she did not know that Bill was meeting tonight. Can you hold the way she says with the option?
Okay.
I think that's the best route.
Yeah.
You guys wanna set a date for that, or, do you know how soon she wants it out, I mean, this, like ASAP, right?
Whenever you can, it's just, it's on the way, that would be like big, it's really big, and it takes up a lot of room. So, it's better.
Um, okay, so she'll be here in twenty minutes, if we can, uh, take with this item, we'll come back to it, you guys want to move? Make a motion to table item?
Make a motion to table. Who will sell that much?
The second.
Motion by, uh, Richard to table, the second by Ernie, uh, roll call Richard. Ford. Ford. Alright, so, approval to purchase booster pumps for town water system. For a couple booster pumps, uh, we're having issues again, we repair them, and then we have issues, and it's just, it's a very frustrating thing, they're just older items, and, I mean, even though we fix them, it's just, I don't know, they keep failing, so.
And they're obsolete.
They're obsolete, and so it's really hard to even get parts, but anyways, we had to, um, use our procurement resolution exemption to purchase utility infrastructure prior to approval, um, so I did go ahead and approve that, we're getting both of them done professionally, um, by help of Southwest, they're coming down with it, we just call, three orders, correct?
Next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Next Tuesday or Wednesday. There was an issue this morning where they were off, and they weren't working, I wish Daniel was there, but he actually got called out, well, he didn't get called out, he had to go to, uh, look at initial over there, um, tonight, but, um, we had a electrician come, and they fixed it, it was working, but that, that's one of the reasons that's what's happening right now, is it actually went down again, so.
Almost went down the other night, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it almost went down, then it blew last night, they were out there since midnight working on it, um, they got it fixed, it was pumping fine, and some, something else happened around three thirty, four o'clock, and it's not the pump, it's not the electrical, I think it's, so they're out there diagnosing, diagnosing it right now.
Diagnosing.
I don't, I don't know.
So, um, this approval is basically just approving, um, what we did, we, uh, ended up, uh, ordering it, I believe the total came out to sixteen dollars?
Yeah, that's for the pump, sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, plus the freight, and then, uh, the, it's gonna be late on top of that.
Right.
Why don't we already prove that, I mean, I'm, I'm for it, but, why didn't we just speed it up, or?
You know, in the past, what do we, like, in the past? You know, we, what did we end up, we ended up buying?
We bought, um, uh, repairs.
Yeah, repair kits for the last one.
It wasn't the actual, remember when we said we, remember when we did it, we had to stop the repair kits, and then they repaired them, but they went off again, so now we're hoping that we're just gonna get a whole new engine, a whole new motor, and then they're gonna come and actually install it themselves, so, that way it's like.
You know, you had that one valve there, that one tiny pump that we had.
And we didn't like, we've been, so we've been kind of putting band-aid on these things, and, I mean, you know, with the hope that they would be okay, but it's, that's not happening. Does Mary Bob come with a warranty, or?
Yeah.
And do they service it themselves after they put it in, or are we still taking care of that, or how does that work?
Uh, no.
Or are they an insurance and they took part of it, or do we have to hire, bring them back to that, or?
Well, ideally, what we would do is bring back the, like we were saying, to stick with one guy, and with the installer being off of Southwest, we would constantly go with them for the electrical side of things, otherwise, I believe our guys can handle servicing it up in the house, unless it's something serious, and then we call them the big ones.
It means that we give them the pumps and stuff from them, and it's best that they do it.
Right.
If any other electrician goes by and boosts it up, something happens, and they'll say, well, it was wired wrong, or.
Yeah, yeah.
There goes a warranty, and you know?
That's what I kinda wondered, if they, since they were putting it in, do they require, they haven't looked at it for a while, or?
I don't think it's a requirement, but it's probably the best option.
Well, I make a motion to approve the purchase of booster pumps for town mountain air water system.
Jeff Gunnar. Motion by Ernie, the second by Richard, roll call Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ford. Ernie. Uh, approval to close the one hundred block on North Roseville for the police station dedication setup and events, so I wanna close that on Friday and Saturday, um, to set up the big tent, to kinda get everything, um, going, um, I know Donna Diner actually emailed me earlier, and she was wondering if there's a way that we can fix the road there, but there's really, I mean, there's not really, um, that I think we probably would've already, but, I know it's kinda sloppy, they always like to spray paint and stuff, but. Have you been in front of it?
Yeah.
If you're in front of the police station? Cause they love to spray paint the lines and stuff, where, um, the Arts Council, whenever they do this, some color festival, they like mark off zones and stuff, and it just, it looks sloppy, but, next time we, I don't know, we use like, uh, they sell paint that comes off, not like washable paint, but the one time they did not, it was like, yeah.
You got some brushes going?
We have a, we have a, uh.
Power washer.
Power washer?
We used the one that I was.
They have, some of them burn solid.
Did you borrow them, you think about it?
I don't know, you borrow, I leave it around a few where the price of the church is, right?
Did you wash it at the home, at the yard?
Once I bought them, we had, we had one, but then gave up, and now we do, what do they run?
So they ask you there from.
This is electric or gas?
Well, but they believe in one, gas one, electric, I think, so they're both, they're priced at one eighty-eight to seventy-seven.
Definitely wanna gas one of them.
Don't, Peter.
I like those hot seats, I don't know, personally.
We don't have them, uh, some at the school?
No, I don't think so, I don't know, we can ask.
I have one of them, but I don't have a car.
Never liked them, see, I'm not really into bike one.
If you would think you wanted.
You go to a parlor? You go to a parlor?
You get a house, man.
So, but, we're bringing this, we're approving this, uh, resolution, this number sixteen, and then we'll do it.
Right, no, yeah, no, we'll do that separate, so the closing of it would be just in front of Salt, and just in front of the station, up to the, up to the alley, so it's not gonna have no effect at all on the full stoppers, 'cause I know that they really like have a, they do anything there, it's, that side will be open, we'll basically put arrows, uh, barrels, uh, barrels across the alleyway, and then barrels on that side, so that way we can, 'cause we wanna like try to, I'm gonna work with chief, and we wanna like kinda make it look nice, kinda part of the vehicle, really nice, like, you know, make a presentation, basically, you know, not just kinda, you know, so, and, uh, we'll have the podium, that's the reason that we ordered that, that's the reason the physical breakings on there, so we got that for the dedication, so, and, um, yeah.
Make a motion to, uh, approve to close one hundred block, uh, North Roseville for police station dedication setup and events.
Jeff Gunnar. Make a motion by Adrian, the second by Richard, roll call, uh, Richard. Ford. Adrian. Ford. Juanita. Ernie. Ford. Alright. Okay, so last year, well, towards the end of last year, I came to you guys about the gas system odorization, um, where we dropped the, the odorization into the gas, um, our goal, as we talked about, was to build, um, a system outside of town where it would automatically drop this, and we wouldn't have to be manually doing it, which is what we have been doing, which is not the most effective way of doing it, so, um, if we built a system, which we already approved funds in the past for, um, then it's gonna be started now, probably July, August time. So what we did was, I don't know if you guys recall when we approved that, but what we basically did was we split it up into several different things, so what we did was we purchased some of the system last year, during last fiscal year, this is the purchase for this fiscal year, and then in July, we'll approve the new purchase for the installation, so what this is for, um, this is, like, six, I think it's one, yeah. Yeah, no, I'll just cut that, 'cause I seen several of them. So this is gonna come out to about approximately seventeen thousand dollars, I know, it's a lot, but. Now, what this is, is for the, um, final, for the final remaining of the materials, now, if you look on your estimate sheets, uh, next fiscal year's gonna be a really big purchase, uh, installation on this for a contractor, the X-Trade, the livestock contractor, fence and painting is approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. Sending out from, uh, John.
And is, this is just for the odorant system, odor portion of that system?
Which is something that we need, I, it's not like, uh, it's not like a want, it's something that PRC was basically like telling us, like, you know, we don't have no limit system, that's why John, we made this kind of, it's not makeshift, it's just all, like, there's a manual way of doing it, which has like the system where you put it over, and then they go, and they like pump it in there, but as you can tell, it's not efficient, I mean, every time we do it, it's getting better and better, but every time we do it, we get mandated recalls, you know, lots of people calling in gas smells, so it's not efficient, it's like, it's, the school almost closed down at one point, um, because of it, so it's just kind of like, you know, it's not efficient. So this will just be like, it basically, it, it knows how much gas is being pulled through it, it's a system that recognizes the amount of gas, and for every so much, it drops a drop of odor in there, so basically, it, it just does regular, something like Alphacity does, you know, we don't have to.
And how you measure this is you go to certain points in town, and they have like a, a sniffer, it's actually called a sniffer, it sniffs it, and then I guess you breathe into it or something like that, and you can get a reading off of it, um, they sniff tested the, the system prior to us doing odorization, and the manufacturer, they pumped it in there, and they have enough odor, but it doesn't have enough to meet our criteria, so.
So what do you mean by the manufacturer, is we buy our gas from obviously a company, and that company is like an Alphacity, I believe it is?
No, it's Mano, that's all. But I don't know where, okay, what's, it's located.
Do you know where it's located? Where we buy our gas from? Where does it come from?
Uh, it used to be at Paso and then afterwards, what, did you?
Well, we, we buy it from a broker who's called Summit, but it's still only at Paso.
Yeah, it's still the same thing.
Yeah.
So they, they're required to put in odorant, and they do, but by the time it comes on even hundreds of miles away and it reaches Mount Air, there's barely any in it, like, it's a very faint smell.
Yeah, we're over there by the microwave tower and uh, off of Highway sixty in uh Deepin Spring. About seven miles in, and then it comes about thirteen, fourteen miles into town. And by the time it gets here, it's pretty, pretty much out.
And we tested the levels, um, I don't have a product company with me, but I've seen the levels and how low it is, um, they give you like what it's supposed to be. And then what ours are at, and ours are way below what it's even supposed to be. So that's the reason that we're not gonna put it in.
And this will be a good opportunity to do a PSA for anybody, a public service announcement. If you smell gas, don't call anybody, don't hit light switches, don't do anything, just get out of the house. Then make a call. Isaac Lorna posted something on Facebook the other day, he's called, he's been to many accidents where people made a phone call, hey, there's gas. Just using your cell phone, trigger an explosion.
Trigger it?
Yep, going to your light switch, hit that light switch, boom. He's seen kids, women, children, men, people die.
Even the, even the person's keys, moving back and forth, huh?
Yes, yeah, keys, anything, just kinda slowly get out of the building. So, if you smell gas. And that's the reason why this is important, because you won't smell it unless we have this.
It's expensive, there's no doubt about that, but at this point, it's kind of like a, it's a need.
It's a low cost for a person's life.
It's the last call, I think.
Uh, got our spread butter.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the materials for natural gas system authorization station. Motion by Adrian, a second by Juanita, we'll call Richard. Four, Adrian, four. Uh, Juanita?
Four.
Sorry. Juanita? You don't make a picture for me. Approval, uh, appointment of planning commissioners. So before we brought this on, um. Uh, so there's three up right now, and that's Ted Lopez, um, Chris Zamora, and Manuel DeCar. Are the three that are up. Now, um, I, I, I take fault in this because I, when he sent me this agenda. I approved it and I kinda just like skimmed through it, I didn't actually pay close attention to this one. Um, I don't wanna just approve. I think that um we should give opportunities to others that want um to be on the planning zone commission. I don't think that um we should just approve them just because they're already on there. Um, and it's kind of what we did with the Estancia Valley Solid Waste when we brought in Jason, and Jason put in, and others put in. It's, I, I don't like the, the idea of just keeping them on just because they're on. I mean, I think that we should give other people opportunities if they want to. They have the same opportunities if nobody puts in, they will be appointed. I mean, you know, it's nothing against them, I don't want them to think that I, I don't want none of them, I don't mind them at all. It's just I feel like we should be providing opportunities to people that want to. And the way that this would work is basically at the next meeting, so between now and the next meeting, people that wanna, wanna be on the commission would submit letters of requests to the government. And then we would have a list of questions at the next meeting, and we would kinda do a little public interviews at the next meeting, if they want back on, or if they want on. And then we would ask questions, and based on those questions. We would, and the reason for questioning is really because of um, just I don't want people to think like, oh, you know, we, we chose them because we chose them. It's kind of just giving everyone an equal opportunity, an equal opportunity, and you guys choosing who you guys think was best, they don't know.
And currently you have Ted Lopez, the, who else?
Chris Zamora.
Chris Zamora.
Manuel DeCar.
Okay.
Uh, Jess Davidson. And who's the other?
Ken.
Ken Porter.
God, Porter.
Uh, Shetter, Shetter, yeah, sorry.
Have you told them that that's the process you're gonna take or not yet, or?
I did. I, I talked to Jess.
Jess?
Yeah.
Let me just, they know, like you said.
Yeah. Well, we, yeah, we'll, we'll let them know that.
It's their junk, how many years, two, two years junk?
It's the same as the Estancia Valley Solid Waste, I just wanna kind of give them an opportunity, I mean, that's why people out there wanna try and get on there. But if we limit, limit it to just who we already have, I don't think that's fair. So, and like I said, it's not trying to kick off anybody if they wanna.
And when the mayor was a councilperson, you, we all voted for term, not just term uh points, but the mid, the, the beginning term, which is April, first, this is the beginning term. It hasn't been officially adopted through the ordinance yet, but that is a standing policy.
Right. So, um, it's an approval to appoint a planning commissioners, um, perhaps you, you would disapprove that. So basically, well, if you wanna put the option out to people, you would disapprove that and basically um say that you, you wanna reach out, you know, bring it back on the agenda for um people that wanna be on. Open it up. Or you can approve those three, and you guys have all that cut off as well. That was just my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be nice to see you kind of, you know, you have a people on.
Also, I sat on the planning committees, yeah, we sat on the planning commission for many, many years. And one of the things with the planning commission is it focuses on zoning, but they don't do much planning. So I would like to see the next constituted planning commission do a lot of planning as well.
God, I mean, sometimes it's good for turnover, I don't know, different opinions, different views.
And those three could still be reappointed, I mean, that's, that's an option as well, we don't know, um, based on interviews and stuff, we would go on that, but I just wanna, just give people a chance, an opportunity. So make motion to disapprove the department of planning commissioners and to re-advertise on next agenda, to give people the opportunity to fly. For the planning commission.
Oh, second.
Yeah, a motion by Adrian, a second by Ernie, we'll call Richard.
Four.
Adrian, four. Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Lorna? Uh, the next item on the agenda is approval of chief to go off uh probation and go on to as a relevant employee. However, we have him on executive session, so we can uh have him to.
They don't have. I thought we were, I don't know, you were chief, but I thought we were talking about going to a year.
We have, but that hasn't passed yet, so he would be exempt from that.
Okay, so that'd be exciting. We should look at that down the road, or?
Yeah. That's, that's the part of the personnel policy that we're gonna do.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, that's part of that. So, and uh at first, it was just gonna be for police, but I wanted it across the board, I think that there should be a one-year probation period for across the board. I talked to our lawyers about it the last time, and they said that it's pretty um, pretty typical for people to have a year. They actually were very um shocked that we had a six-month probation period. So, but that is coming, but chief would be exempt because he, we haven't passed it yet. That wasn't on purpose.
He could be exempt if we uh.
This guy. So this is a.
So this would uh pertain to JJ too, since he was hired before?
Well, it's not, it's not in effect yet.
I think he would be grabbed on there. I think this would be for any new hires.
Yeah, from.
Right.
From the time that.
So JJ would also be a six-month, even though his six-month would be up during, or, well, hopefully, he already had a passport, it's a year. When his six months come up, he would still be at six months.
Well, he's kinda sitting example, since I do the chief stat as far as hired before.
Yes. So this would be any new employees coming in would get this. And just for the record, I don't know if you have any uh interviews coming up, but uh that may be approved before that next police officer comes in. Just when they think about.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm asking the table.
Table, I have a ten, I have a nineteen here.
Mm-hmm. So we're gonna go into executive session.
Oh.
And discuss that.
Okay.
You just acted like, like we added two hours to work then.
I say he's good?
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll be most of the table, talk through executive session.
Chair, do you hear? A motion by Ernie, a second by Richard, we'll call Adrian.
I'm glad you're back.
Richard?
Four.
Adrian? Four. Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Alright, Carol's still not here, so we're gonna go into department head reports, and the uh police department first.
They'll see up to, I'm sorry, you're presenting.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice wintry blast these last couple of days. Everything went good. Um, for crime report uh for this uh period, um, we're going up on calls, but we're now at thirty-five. From the last period to now, which includes animal control and code enforcement. Officers have issued over possibly twenty-two citations for the second part of this month. Officer Torres, four citations, uh, Officer LeWort, eleven. Officer Martinez, six. Steve Bernhour, one citation. He's getting a lot of compliance, which is great, I love that. Uh, all these resulted in P A times, and nobody wants to go to court, they just wanna pay it out, which is good for, for us in that situation. Uh, we got two burglary uh reports and one larceny for this end of the month. Out of the burglary investigations that we investigated, we get two arrests and we become a console property. So also a good thing on that. Uh, we responded to seven uh, we call non-criminal calls, which could be anything from suspicious vehicles, unwanted people, it just varies. And uh, we also got some suspicious vehicles, we checked them out, turned out that they were people, they're driving different cars. Uh, last night, unfortunately, it's not on this, but I just added on mine, uh, we had an unattended death, another citizen passed away. I can't remember his name, but I won't mention his name. Lives down in the southern part of the, of the town. Uh, we got a call from his daughter, who was very um concerned, she hadn't heard from her dad in several weeks. Well, it turned out through the OMI investigation that he passed away and he was there for several weeks.
Yeah.
It was not bad. Um, but no foul play, everything checked out, is according to our crime scene investigation and the OMI. So the body was transported to uh Albuquerque for autopsy. Uh, administratively, uh, animal control, code enforcement, impounded two, we adopted one. We had six complaints of animals running at us, one citation issued. Two code enforcement property related calls that he took care of, and one compliance letter. That's probably gonna go until payment. So that's, that's a good thing. Uh, we are now registered with the U S Secret Service counterfeit program. We have access to the database, to when we get any counterfeit bills, like a family dollar or a store. We now have a way to check them right on the scene, you just run the numbers and they'll tell us if it's good or bad. Uh, so we, we got that taken care of. We're in partnership with the Torrance County Underage Drinking and Substance Abuse Program into twenty twenty-four. I just came from a meeting uh the other day in regards to this. Uh, this is where we're gonna get some, some type of funding to help the community, where we could do programs and do some kind of DWI uh enforcement. We're also in partnership, I just, we just got approved with Homeland Security FEMA program, have plenty of grants for training and equipment. So that will help us a lot, since we're getting on our budget and it's gonna be tight. Homeland's willing to offer training and equipment, so we're gonna look into that program. We're also got, uh, we renewed our partnership with Narcan program. Uh, to combat drug overdose, supplies us with Narcan kits. They just send me uh brand-new shipment of Narcan kits that we can use when we respond in case we get any overdose. So now we're, we're up on our supplies. And there's gonna be more training, if anybody's interested, I think it's uh this month in April. And we already, where private citizens can go and get trained how to administer the Narcan. It'd be good training for anybody that's interested in stuff, so.
You can get me a date on that, also on Facebook.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we'll do that, and pretty much um, the end of my report, um. Uh, two cars go down this week, uh, electrical and accident. Getting taken care of, and it will be done tomorrow. But uh, other than that, the thing good is we have some um uh backup cars, so my officers didn't, didn't time out of service, we just transferred cars, parked them, and said, let's go. So they're out there and thinking their business. Other than that, that's, that's all, that's all.
One thing I wanna point out is um, you said that there was more calls, and I see that as a, I don't see that as a good thing. But I see that as a good thing because those oftentimes where you would say, there wasn't a lot of calls, and then, but we would know about like things in the background. So I think people are becoming more positive, and they're actually reaching out to you guys, and they're seeing what's being done, so they're actually reporting, which I think is a very, very good thing. So even though obviously I don't wanna see that number high, it kind of gives me a little hope that we're headed in the right direction and, and the, the public are seeing you and your department as a positive, and they're actually reporting it, so.
Yes, sir, I've, I've got a lot of good uh, uh, report from people on Facebook and just even coming by the station and saying thank you and, you know, that we're, that they see us out there. Uh, of course, there's always gonna be complaints on that we're harassing, we're not doing that. We're taking care of what we need to take care of, make everybody safe and make sure that everybody does what they, they gotta do. But um, we have a good rapport with the sheriffs, state police, uh, they're gearing up for their summer program, DWI program. Seat belts, we're gonna be doing seat belt enforcement, and that's coming just right after spring. So that's all overtime money that's uh free to us. It's not uh, it's not gonna cost the town anything, we, when we work it. It's paid by the state, and the town gets reimbursed for our, any time of salaries and stuff.
Caesar doesn't wear seat belts.
There's a lot of people that don't wear seat belts, I see them and I go, oh, they see us and they can put the seatbelt on. But other than that, it, it, it is, it's working out, and I'm glad that, that we have the support of the council and, and the citizens, that they're, that they're realizing that we're, we're doing the best we can. Hopefully with our next candidate, it, it looks very positive. It'll bring up the department to where we need to be. I would like to have an extra officer, if you guys can approve that, that would help tremendously.
Every grant money, we'll approve it.
Man, I'm trying, let me tell you, I am trying. A lot of the money that I'm feeing on, I mean, excuse me, DOJ, uh, cause I already inquired, got diverted for the um immigration thing, the wall pension and all that stuff. So they took the money that we would normally ask, and they reverted it, so we, we're gonna have to wait to see what happens. But it, it's just one of those issues that, that when you get grant money, you gotta get it and, and take advantage of it while it's still there, that's gonna always come. Other than that, anybody have a question?
I had one, but it's still stuck in my mind, I have to get on the down, but what was your second item, they do?
Um, uh, secret service, Torrance County underage drinking, substance abuse.
The death?
Well, that's what I said, I had the death on my mind, but I thought he, I thought I had a question on one of the other issues, but I just can't remember.
Homeland Security?
Yes, I remember, the victim wasn't dead, I'm just, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, I know the gentleman, he died within, um, by himself, you know, it's kind of like a hermit. We, we did locate a family member, that was a good thing, not like the other individual, we still have not found out who this guy is. I mean, we know who he is, but we haven't found any relatives, so it's sad.
So chief, how much of that accident gonna cost?
I'm gonna take the unit tomorrow. Um, I got a place that, that they work on police units, and um, hopefully it could, it'll be under nine hundred dollars or so. But if it involves metalwork, it's gonna be higher. I mean, these new cars, they're made different. Uh, my graphics got damaged, so we're gonna have to take that portion and put a new one. So I'm trying to work with them to see if we can keep it under at least fifteen hundred. Um, our deductible is a thousand, so I, I know new cars like that, it's probably be around that. Unfortunately, I mean, um, I had to take immediate action, um, I removed the vehicle, put it out of commission. And the individual was driving a older vehicle to further notice. That was my decision, the mayor and I spoke about that, and I think it's fair, and I think it's, it's needed to be done. So that unit will go, when it's, once it's repaired, it will go to our new applicant.
When did the accident happen?
Sunday?
Saturday.
This Saturday. This Saturday. Yeah, we have video.
Yeah, we have video. He called me immediately.
Yeah, they, it was timely, so there were no celebrations of S O P. It was soon as it happened, you were notified, Dennis was notified, I was notified.
I took photos.
Yeah.
Right away.
Yeah, so it was done by him. I just couldn't help it. Luckily, it was something fixed instead of another vehicle or a pedestrian or.
When I first got the call, I thought he was sight swipe or T-bolt. That's on the go, no, I'm going down there, are you okay? No, he was sight swiped. And nobody else involved.
So what I understood from you, correct me if I'm wrong, he won't be getting this vehicle back in his possession after it's fixed? You're giving it to the new officer and he will continue driving the vehicle that he's driving now?
He will, he will drive the old units and we decided it's, he has earned his responsibility back. And even if that happens, if we do get new units from the U S D A, he would probably end up with one of the Dodge Chargers, but not no more new to me. I, I think it's fair because it's, this is like an offense. And I think it's fair to not only the town and also to the other officers because the vehicles were issued on the grounds of, they were taking care of, you know, the other cars, the old cars that they had. And he was one of those individuals that was chosen for that. And I, I, you know, I'm responsible ultimately for his actions and I do apologize for, to the town. But my decision to take that vehicle and no unit, it's not gonna see it. It'll be a long, long time before you see them again.
And to put that in perspective, we, we don't really have it in policy, but we do the same thing with like cell phones. So if you have a cell phone and you damage or lose your cell phone, your second one will be paid for. But then the third one, you have to pay for your own or you get the cheapest that they possibly have. So it's not like we're picking on an individual or not. We need the same policy that applies to a cell phone, obviously applies to a vehicle. I just wanna put that in perspective of that. We do have that with most of our items, not just one. You should take care of what was given to you.
And, and you know, the policy is very, it's very adamant, I mean, it's very direct. And unfortunately, accidents do happen, but you've gotta be exercising caution all the time. Because I mean, we're out there, the public all the time, we're responsible to this property and if it's our negligence, and I, I did an investigation and there was no negligence, it was just one of those things. We looked at the video, it happened. But if there was any negligence or violation of N S O P, I can guarantee you there'll be more discipline coming down the tubes on that.
I'm just trying to think what happens on my, on my government side, you know, somebody gets an accident, they start looking at defensive training or they start looking at if you have C O, I don't know if all our officers are training in that or went to that courses or.
The D D C course? Yeah, we have to, for interns, we do the, but there's another course that I'm trying to bring, it's H A V I B O. And that is for police, it's emergency, well, I'm sure you went through it. And with those two courses, it teaches you again, safety, cautious, watch what you're doing. And, you know, so he's gonna be going to that class, guaranteed. You good?
My question was on the, I remember now, was on the burglary, city of burglary, and then recover the property? I was here in town recently? And, and was, and obviously I guess the, the stolen property was recovered in town too?
Yeah, it happened Monday. I was working Monday and we had a burglary caught at the road and we had good witnesses and we were able to locate the subjects within a half an hour that we got there. And the property that was allegedly taken was recovered, given back to the owners. We located the individuals, did felony charges, we got one for burglary and one for conspiracy, did that as a lookout. And then we come later to find out that these two individuals are also involved in that Torrance County burglary ring. So the S O is gonna pursue their charges on them.
And what about, okay, so when you recover the property, does it, do they still have it on there? Would they hide it in someone, someone else's house? You know, like at my place, was it there? I mean, you know what I'm trying to say?
They had it on.
Have it on, it's still.
They admitted and so forth, when they got the Miranda rights, they admitted going into the house. We got statements from the owner saying that they did not give them permission to enter the house. So it's a pretty tight case and the D A approved our complaint right away. It's a good case. Plus, they're looking at some other burglars at the county too.
And just, just so everyone's aware as well, public wise and council, I don't know if you guys have gotten this call, but I've gotten several, on an individual that's going around asking for like money or food and things like that. I gave him food a couple of times, I contacted his family. It's not that they don't want nothing to do with him, they just kind of distrust issues out there because of, obviously he's not a model citizen. So just beware, because even though, I mean, he is known to steal as well, I just wanna put that out there. So just beware, you know, be careful. But he is going around and there's not much we can do about it. I mean, there's nothing that's legal about going in someone's house and nothing for food and money, but.
Is this the guy that's homeless?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we had an incident with that individual today where he set up shop underneath the trees over here at the electric company. He had his own little tent and everything. Well, they called us this morning and we went over there and it's documented now that he cannot go on the electric company property, but he'll be subject to arrest. So they, since this property was on their property, they scooped it up and put it in trash can. And they put it in boxes, so if he goes there tonight and is looking for his tent and so forth, it's gonna be in the trash can. They can do that, that is private property. They were kind of upset about it because they didn't, uh, aware of it, because those trees were hanging, so it was a perfect little camp. He was having his camp there. We got other calls on him where before he was going to these houses asking for food and stuff and people were being nice to give it to him. He started getting aggressive in these last couple of weeks. We have already five reports on him. Where now he's demanding money from the senior citizens and people. That's robbery. So we, we looked for him all day today, we could not find him, so when we do find him, we're gonna have a serious talk with him and say, you continue this, we're gonna charge you with a felony because you cannot demand money from people. That is robbery. So he knows we're looking for him because he hasn't been in town all day long. He's gonna get a surprise.
This is the guy we called about that was hanging out at the very end of Sunset?
Yes.
We thought maybe he was swatting back there, but I don't know.
He's been kind of moving around, staying in the abandoned houses, so we've been throwing him out of there. Staying in our regular places, he's out of there and then now he's made, well, he doesn't have a home now, but he was under the trees.
Does, does his boy have family here in Montney?
Yes, yes. The mayor, Parkland.
Yeah. His cousin says he's a heroin addict.
Yeah.
Like I said, I, I've given him, you know, I, I took him food and drinks and all that stuff, but, you know, there's nothing wrong, I mean, he can walk around all he wants, but when you're stealing, that's where I consider that, you know, that's when it becomes a problem. Another thing I was gonna say is about the abandoned houses, because you did bring that up. We just had a meeting with Steve and our Public Works guys and a couple of buildings are gonna be coming down soon, starting with ours, which is down the other side of the rodeo. We've already discussed all this, but I just want, it is happening. I know it's taking a while, but they're, they are busy. I don't know if you guys noticed when you guys walked in, but the police station here just took off the whole roof, so all they have to do is come in with a tobacco and knock them off, so. Things are happening, they're not happening, you know, as quick as obviously we probably all want them to happen, but they are happening. All the, all the homes that we talked about that thing, every single one, Steve has written a letter to them. So Steve is on top of it, it's happening. So, I mean, every single one that I brought up, he's like, oh yeah, something with her, oh yeah, so and so, and I'm like, oh. Yeah, it's happening. So just leave guys like.
We're making sure of that. Other than that, I mean, we even got him a job, I got him a job at the greenhouse and lasted there a week and then didn't show up. Because I'm, I'm in contact with the managers at the greenhouse and, and they wanna hire people. So we got him a job and then he didn't show up after a week and they said, well, you're not gonna show up, but we don't need you, so they fired him.
I didn't know you did that and I think that's really, really awesome that you did that and I'd love to say so myself.
Well, I knew they were hiring, so we're normally like, dude, you hired these people, yeah. And they hired about two or three from here and they're, they're there, but except him, he just didn't show up. So, I mean, they can only wait so long, you know, so it's just, it's a sad situation. We try to help the community with our connections and it's up to them to take it.
Exactly.
It's up to them to pursue it.
Perfect. Any more questions?
I just wanna say, before the, is it dedicated out or obviously can just put it out there, just maybe get a double sided sign? For the highway, I know you can see the police department coming from, like if you're headed to the west. I don't know, that may be nice.
Does Chris have a folder?
Yeah, or maybe the highway, the highway department, they can put it up for us, you know, courthouse, you know, police station, that deal. I think that would kinda form, I would, that's great, yeah.
We'll do that for sure.
Can you put it on the steps thing?
That's too small. Four, almost is one fit though. Yes. D O T stops on this, we think. Perfect. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
One, one question, you can sit down, Chief, but I just, I have a question for you, directed to you, I guess. Last night I called, I didn't call, I texted the mayor. When I got in, there was an individual walking down the park road with a flashlight by himself.
Well, that was, she was checking the park.
It wasn't, I didn't think, something I needed to call even the non-emergency, yeah, you know, the dispatch. I didn't, I didn't think about, I didn't, I thought, I don't know. You know, but what would you recommend, something like, call you guys, I don't know, I don't know, I text the mayor?
Yeah, I'm recommending that to, I mean, I know everybody's used to calling, everybody's got their number. I don't mind getting called, that is my job, I don't have a problem with that. But to document it, in case we're not on duty, the S O will take our calls. And, you know, you never, you don't know, I mean, this guy could be walking around and getting ready to break in. So I would highly recommend that to call dispatch first, say, we need an officer at this location, blah, blah, blah. And then, you know, those, those dispatchs, deputy out there, if we're not on duty. If the sixth guy, I mean, the guy that I wanna hire, it'll give us that coverage, I'll have coverage.
And another thing to take into consideration, I don't think most people think of is information about the person. You never know, like they're wearing a red shirt. It could be someone that just caused drama at the station in the red shirt and we have a video of them, you know what I mean? So it's kind of, the, so we had a, one time, oh no, it was actually not, it was like putting, it's like putting a puzzle piece together. You have to know the pieces, so just document.
No, I mean, by the time I was turning it into home, what caught my eye was the flashlight that went on. And I was like, oh, there's somebody there with a flashlight. And then turned it off when I, when I was making the, making my, my right hand turn before to come down the park road.
Did you leave burgie, right, like?
I leave it twenty-four seven, I'm being, and anyway, I already sold the flashlight. By that time, they were, they were walking by the little, where she little Stevie dibs, or forest and cedar there?
Yeah.
And they were, they were headed toward, you know, toward the shells, so they're headed east, not really your house, but headed east. And the flashlight wasn't always on and before I turned, made my, my little left hand turn to go into my little road, the flashlight was going on again. And looking over towards Charlotte Birmingham, the storage, they walked that way, the flashlight went out, the flashlight went off. So I texted the mayor, I'm like, what, I don't know, like, do I bother the nine-one-one call or the, or the non-emergency with, there's somebody walking? That sounds dangerous, so where's he at, you know, like, what, what are you saying? I didn't, it was dark clothing, it was dark at night, so it's kind of hard to give you what they're wearing. Anyway, I just wanna know what you recommend for something.
Yeah, I think it would be best to contact the dispatcher and that way it's all documented and we have something, you know, to go on. And, and like I said, go dispatch, S O, and if we're not on right away, they're, they're really good about that, actually.
And do you have a non-emergency number?
I do. That was the problem, people weren't calling dispatch and there, there's no issue in the mountain.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a guy walking with a flashlight, but it, you know, I mean, no, I didn't, I didn't see nothing else. I see a dog, I see a backpack, you know, it, it just, one in the morning. So then I went ahead and said, well, you know, they all went over riding and they weren't down that road anymore, but, you know, once you see a light, so too, you don't see that person no more either, you know? They could have been right there or behind something, I don't know. Just make sure that I let somebody know that I went around the neighborhood, like figure eight a couple of times.
And we're gonna get more calls, it's gonna increase as it gets warmer, trust me, it'll be summer.
I probably would have been the guy getting called, because I was creepy looking, prison on the neighborhood, you know what I mean?
No, we know your truck.
Maybe, maybe, you know, C Y P has what's called Pound Safe. It's a central, statewide central intake, maybe we can look into doing a Pound Safe or Pound Town or something like that. And it would go directly to Central Dispatch and we could start advertising it through a townwide campaign where people, rather than try, oh, eight, four, seven, whatever the number is to dispatch, or having it on the thing, there's every someone remembers Pound Safe, we have Pound Safe, and they can call straight to Dispatch right away. That way it would streamline the tits going to Dispatch.
Is that, is that an app or?
I don't know, I'm gonna look into it.
It's just a, a number, I, we would have to like choose our own.
Yeah, and I don't know what, if there's a cost associated, I'm sure there is.
I can get with Ben and ask him.
Yeah.
Since he's kind of like their supervisor, I'm sure he would know.
And if he can't do it, then maybe perhaps ask him if we can do it, we can shoot it that direction. Read right to them.
Carol, I understand that you're here. I'm gonna go over Public Works really quick, it'll take me like two minutes. And then we'll go to your item and then E M S, so. So Public Works, Daniel is at the Cooper Works, so I'm gonna read this real quick. This is beginning Monday, March eleventh, two thousand nineteen, ending Friday, March twenty-second. Workers on call were Edward and J J. Meters were ran on three eighteen to three twenty. There was one water line problem at Cedar and Ripley, a six inch main. There was no sewer problems. They did an injection of the gas over end on three thirteen. They serviced two roads, potholes on Cedar Dale, Highway sixty, potholes on Main to Highway sixty. They serviced the dump truck, the tobacco and the road crater. The sewer pipe was serviced on three eleven, three thirteen, three fifteen, three eighteen, three twenty and three twenty-two. That obviously needs servicing every couple of days, regular service. Additional work completed, they stopped Jesse David's chamber bathroom, red black Cayman House, take waters, waste water samples on three thirteen. They fixed stop signs that fell over or were falling over due to heavy winds. They cut down a tree in the alley behind elementary school, didn't let anyone knock into it down.
All right.
So I just have a question, kind of put out there, very ancient city, right? And there's that biggest pothole that everybody kind of falls in all the time. I know it doesn't belong to us, I know Martine keeps on saying that they don't have asphalt. So I didn't, I didn't know, maybe we could work with the, maybe work with the state and maybe we could fix that for him. I don't know how we would see that or if we can't do that at all. Because I know a lot of our community goes in.
Where? Where's?
Where is it?
Oh.
It's by Ancient City, it's right.
In his parking lot area or?
Uh, it's in the state right away.
I never know.
I mean, because I go there all the time and I always see people kind of like falling this pothole. I know it's not our responsibility, but I just kind of, I just wanted to see what people think about it and maybe we could work with the state and.
Making their own food lazy.
I don't know, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we can. Can they help us when we go back?
Yeah. I can see.
Me too. I don't know. It might require certain specs for the asshole that we use, but we could ask them. Why do they not have any? I don't know, maybe they don't wanna do that.
They like the last, very special. So we have to ask the state because it's part of that, on that, you're saying that, okay.
All right, you guys wanna bring back name, P K, number fourteen, approval of the ambulance. I want to see them, they have black, uh, table.
One second.
Table, item number fourteen, approval of the ambulance, the second by Ernie, so I'll call Richard.
Order.
Adrian.
For.
Ernie?
For.
All right, approval of the ambulance, E M S department has a second ambulance that has mechanical problems. And this is requested, sell the unit, Carol, please.
Did you just vote on that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We wanted it to untable it.
Untable, okay, great. Well, first of all, thank you for considering this. The E M S department has two ambulances. One sort of works and the other one doesn't work at all. So it's, it's a nineteen, I wanna say ninety-three. One sort of works and the other one doesn't work at all, so it's, it's a nineteen, I want to say ninety-three, I believe, ninety-four. Um, it's been sitting there, it's kind of just taking up space. So, our recommendation would be to sell it and to, uh, because it doesn't need to be insured, I'm sure it's still covered under that. It's, it doesn't meet any safety standards anymore for an ambulance, so it's not usable in that capacity. So, the recommendation would be, you know, to move it, move it out, sell it, get what we can and, um, I don't know the town's policy about using the money back toward the department, but that would be really nice if we could do that.
I'm pretty sure.
I have absolutely no idea what it's worth and it doesn't start, so we'd have to probably put a little, some money into.
We're hoping you knew what it's worth.
Yeah, forty-eight million dollars. Who's that guy that buried all the treasure up in?
A much bigger number.
Yeah, wouldn't we like it? So, are there any questions about that?
Well, one of the things that we're kind of stuck on is not knowing the price. So, we're kind of wondering if you think an auction is probably the best route? Can you use it in?
You know, I hate to tell you this, but I have absolutely no idea, I, you know, the fact that it's so old, it can't be used as an ambulance, so there's really no way you can put it on, you know, the fire EMS kind of circuit. Uh, it would probably be used as a utility truck, you know, that somebody would want to do for construction or something to that effect, make into a camper or, or whatever. I'm sorry, I should have maybe looked into that.
Oh, no, I mean, it's okay, I don't know if you can even like, I don't even know how you would find the practice or anything.
No, me neither.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just kind of thinking that we just do like an auction and what we get is what we get. I mean, you know, we could get five dollars, we could get five hundred dollars. We could get five thousand dollars.
I, I think it's, it, it's run and not too long ago. Uh, it hasn't been maintained, so I, you know, I think it as a vehicle, if somebody knows what they're doing, it would obviously be an okay vehicle and it's, it's got the, you know, the, the passenger compartment kind of thing, which could be turned into a, um, you know, vehicle, uh, utilitarian type of vehicle, so.
It does leak oil.
It leaks oil, yeah, well. A lot, yeah, it's got like. My sense there is, you know, it's sitting there, there's nothing on it that can be usable, maybe a light bulb or two on the existing ambulance. So, there's not anything that really we could strip off of it that would be of any value, maybe a radio or something like that, but that's all built into the, into the unit, so.
The lettering and the lights, it's lights.
And lights.
And lights. It would be if they built on.
Yeah, the lights probably. So, I, you know, based on what you're saying, and it can't be used as an EMS vehicle, because it just doesn't meet any standards, so I would think an auction would be the best way to go.
Do you have a date that you would be interested in, uh, or available to you, how?
Tomorrow.
I don't know, I was thinking a month, so we could kind of get the items on the next agenda, then we could put us a date.
Do you have other things you have to auction? I don't know how you'd go about doing the auction, but.
Um, we have a couple things that we need to auction, um, one of the things is a snowplow that the fire department hasn't moved out. That are just wasting weight.
Yeah.
We're trying to try to make some money. Not us, but.
No, I, I agree, I mean, it's just sitting there taking up space, so it'd be nice to, to get it out of there.
Uh, Carrie, what do you think, the time now, we're gonna get like a list of items and kind of pictures of them and stuff like that, do you think you'd be able to do that, fill up by the next council meeting? So, we'll put those on the next council meeting and then maybe we can come up with a date. Um, maybe the picture calendar and just shoot us a date and we'll approve it, the auction at that meeting is.
Do I have to be the auctioneer?
No.
Oh, boy, a whole new career.
No, um, yeah, no, we'll, we'll either get someone or if there's a cost, I'll have to do it like I did last time.
And in the meantime, can you move it out in the backyard or?
Well, there's no, really no reason to, because it's, you know, it's garage, it's not, uh, the space is just there, so it would probably deteriorate more, get mice and whatever living in it, so I would say just leave it where it is. Can't move it, I mean, it's not drivable anyway, so.
Because I thought if you needed the space.
No. If, when we get the new ambulance, that's when we're gonna need the space, so.
Could you perhaps get some of the fireworks, our department, it's a fire department that does, younger kids to peel off the stickers?
Uh, my understanding is that there's a technique to doing this, um, and, um, the sign company basically said that you can't just peel it off or scrape it off, because you just ruin the whole thing. You have to use a.
A heat gun.
A heat gun or, you know, a good hairdryer or something like that, I'm not sure if it's something that.
We, yeah, we, we did it for the cars, we got a heat gun and we took off all the old graphics. Did a pretty decent job, so when we took them in to get painted enough, maybe not to get enough.
No.
You got the old one?
No, party, party had options.
Oh, you got your own.
Yeah, I don't know if it's something you want to tell people, because I don't know, we can find out, but, you know.
I can, I can get Walter, who knows?
Yeah, we can, we can get that done.
Yeah, our public works are pretty busy.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you can give me pictures and everything that the fire department wants to tell, I'll have a, a call with Philip.
Okay.
And then if you can get me a, a date after the next meeting, well, obviously probably like, you know, a month from now, hopefully.
Okay.
So, and then we will advertise it and approve it at that point. Awesome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And then the EMS report?
Yeah, thank you, um, you know, it's interesting listening to the chief talk about the seatbelt rule and enforcement of the seatbelt.
Sorry, uh, we didn't get it approved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make an auction, there will be a bunch of, uh, and maybe other items that they want to put up for auction.
One minute, a second, right, Richard, roll call, Richard.
Ford.
Adrian.
Ford.
One minute.
Ford.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I feel like it's going to my, my mom or dad and they just say yes. Um, now, I, I do want to, uh, say to the chief, thank you for, uh, going to enforce the seatbelt rule and I'll tell you why. Last, was it Saturday or Sunday, there was a very, very, very bad EMS call that was on, uh, Route forty-two. I did not, I was not available to respond, but we probably had ten or twelve people from EMS and Fire that went. The reason I say that, first of all, that part of the road is really bad, there's been several major accidents. Two dead adults. Three very, very seriously injured children. Um, the department did a tremendous job and I will say it is a very difficult thing for people, whether you be paid or volunteers, to go through. Um, in a sense, luckily on Saturday, we were together for, you know, a work detail type of day and we ended up calling in a minister to work with our volunteers, because it was a very disturbing thing. Um, EMS and Fire is never easy, but this involved body parts and all kinds of things, so, uh, needless to say, I say that because these are very dedicated people and, and please respect the fact that they go through some of this kind of army stuff. Um, we have, um, trying to set up a meeting with our medical director, who is Dr. Justin Hazen. Uh, we are required by the state to have a medical director, uh, that's active and will provide guidance and be available for things like that call. Um, and we're waiting to hear back from him as to when that happens. Other than that, things are, you know, we're probably taking, I would say, about eighty percent of the calls that we get. It's difficult at night, because we don't have people who are available at night, so, um, Superior comes in, uh, for that call, that I told you about the bad accident, uh, AMR did come in and they had response units from Corona and, um, Lincoln, I mean, that's how far they came.
AMR from the Limb?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was a bad call.
Where was this, uh, where was it at?
It's forty-two, south.
By Willard, right?
South of Willard.
Yeah, more than fourteen.
On the road going to Corona?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen, I think.
Really good.
There were not.
There was no locals, there were, right, there was no locals from, from.
I don't believe there were people from Mount Neere, but, but that's on our service area.
Stephanie from, uh, uh, Stancia, I think.
It's Stancia, yeah.
Yes, it's Stancia, I think.
They called every, they toned out everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I even got to tone it.
County, county fire was there, um, Stancia was there.
Two med as I heard.
Yeah, yeah, it was tough, it was a tough one. Um, but I, you know, I'm proud to say that, uh, we're working at it. It's, um, a daunting task. Uh, I always say there's, everything's possible with enough time, money and people. Um, and that, those are the grappling issues, for those who got, the challenges that we have right now. Um, the chief and I talked, have talked about different kinds of configurations for the, um, fire and EMS department and Phillip and I talked about them too, so hopefully we'll have some proposals to you soon. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Fire.
Thank you for your service too, by the way, I know you spend a lot of time doing this, so appreciate it.
Good evening, um, not a whole lot, but, um, no structure fires, no fire relief, just those two, um, EMS assist calls, and those both were pretty bad, um. Other than that, we just had some, um, hose testing done on our truck. Um, they all did pass. Um, we also have hose and ladder testing scheduled for the tenth of next month, which is kind of early, it hasn't been a full year. But, um, if we don't get them now, we won't get them for another like six, seven months. So, we're gonna go ahead and just get them right away. And, um, just a reminder, the twelfth and thirteenth of this morning is the regular active class at the fire department.
Yeah, we want to send, uh, JJ and, uh, Vince to that clinical last year. The way that, it's a Friday and a Saturday, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, the way that we did that last time was, uh, those two individuals will be able to take a day off within that same pay period. So, if that, uh, they'll be able to take, you know, one, a workday off and then they would attend that Saturday set. So, it's really up to them, and actually, uh, it has to be within the same week, not even the same pay period, it has to be the same week, because it's up to forty hours. So, basically that Monday to Thursday before that Saturday, they can take off any of those days. And then they would go to work on Saturday to attend this class.
Which class?
What is it?
Radioactive.
Radioactive place.
Yeah, fire department.
NSF, uh, grant some day and kind of like the total calls, what it would look for, how to.
How to redesign.
Not redesign.
So, the place that they go into or?
Yeah, no, no, it's gonna be at the fire department.
No, it's gonna be at the media center.
Oh.
That was a mix-up.
Oh.
It's at the media center on Friday side.
Do you have officers there?
Yes, we, we gotta go, it's, it's good training, one of the best training.
Any towns totally safety hours?
That's right.
Fourteen, I think.
Fourteen, yeah. So, I need my safety hour.
Is there any teaching?
Got you.
If you can let JJ and Vince know tomorrow?
I'd like. Just make sure.
And that water, reservoir or whatever, that, the, the D tar, soil conservation, is that working, has it been completed? Before you're getting the water?
Mm-hmm, it is, and it's collecting water and it's been working really well. Especially now with the wasters, so, that we have water in there.
Awesome. Any more questions? Thank you, Carrie, for all you're doing, and the fire department, we appreciate it, thank you.
I will, all right, thank you.
All right, Dennis.
We completed MBD destruction, document destruction, so, uh, I'll be working on the finance pretty soon, I need to bring a resolution before you guys to go ahead and approve that, and then we can get rid of, uh, a lot of documents that go back to the early two thousands. Uh, questions on the voucher list last week, the city of Albuquerque charged, and the, uh, one of your questions was, what was these kind of low charges? The city of Albuquerque charges a participation fee on, every year, and so that's what that, those charges were. It's typically, the charge is actually pretty high, it's about a thousand, five hundred to a thousand dollars per fee. Um, that's, that's.
Remember at the last meeting, you guys asked?
It's a participation fee, just, just.
Cause we, we go in on that. So, basically, we're considered with, uh, the insurance company, we're, we're considered part of the city of Albuquerque, so that way we get lower rates. So, we're like all bundled in, so basically what they do is they charge us participation for that, so that, um, participation, we're giant.
Yeah, the other question, uh, those, the tires were from multiple used tires for the sweeper, dump truck and, uh, ACO unit. Uh, I thought they were pretty low for a brand new tire, but no, they're just repairs. They took them off, patched them up, and so that's the reason those charges were. Tyler Conversion, uh, we have consultant in here, um, he's been here all last week. He'll be here for about a month, maybe five weeks, and Phyllis adores him, so, Phyllis is a good judge of character. And so, uh, they've been working real closely together, this week is, uh, is, um, last week was general ledger, so I was working closely with him, this week is, uh, payroll. And so, we've been sending in payroll stuff. Um, so that's where that's going, uh, April twenty-ninth, we'll, we'll start the end user training. And then finally, later on, probably in like July or August, that's when the billing consultant will be on site. Uh, we're hosting a blood drive at the Saw building on Monday, April twenty-second, so please sign up. Uh, we've been having some pretty good turnouts. Our winter turnout is better than our spring turnout, so I really want to kind of make an impact this time. There's no real incentive this time, winter turnout, you get free turkey. This time they give, last year they gave us a free ice cream, but they didn't actually bring the ice cream, it was a voucher for some unknown place in Albuquerque, so I don't even bother with it. So, just out of the kindness of your heart, please come out and donate.
So, two things on that, if you can make a Facebook, uh, you know, you did, and then also we'll advertise for Easter, because that's the day after.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I even asked Esperance if there's any issues with giving blood the day after Easter, but there's not. She's my Catholic expert. Um, FY twenty, I'm working on the budget for FY twenty, in fact, today, what I have to do is, we have a whole new system for, uh, with DFA, and we're entering a whole new system with Tyler. And it's already daunting just learning the old, the new super DFA system, because not even DFA really knows it, and they're changing it on the fly as well. So, what I'm, what I've been doing the past couple days is converting our old system into the DFA system. And, and I kind of, I finished today, and I finished all of FY eighteen, so I can have actuals. And then starting tomorrow, I'll have to start plugging FY nineteen up in for three quarters. And then I'll have a good system that I can actually apply towards FY twenty. So, right now I'm working on the operating budget aspects of it. And then, uh, I'm hoping next week I'll be able to actually put together the budget and present, have something to present to you. Possibly at the next meeting, but most likely the first meeting of, uh, next month. Uh, Public Works stucco, building stucco, uh, the ACO burn hour is putting together a scope of work, you actually put a scope of work. And it's not so much that we're bidding it out, we're just getting close to see what the value is. Uh, we're actually kind of at a, uh, impasse right now, because we could either relap it. If we relap it, it requires, uh, permitting and going, and getting inspections. Whereas if we just restucco it, it will not require that. It's a, Jess, which is also a professional contractor, thirty years and, well, forty years in the business. He prefers not to lap it, because it's already, um, a concrete building. But burn hours under the pressure that we should lap it and we should put a coat, uh, building paper, because if you look, you could actually see the lines of the brick that's the building is made of. So, he thinks, he believes it'll last longer that way. So, I may get a quote from both sides, but you did go ahead and shoot that out to one of his contract buddies that will not be putting in a bid, that's one of the procurement code requirements, is anybody helping out with, uh, putting the quote together, or not the quote, but putting the scope of work together, may not be on. So, this person already said he won't bid on it, so he's gonna help us out, get a, an idea of how much it's gonna cost to stucco that building. And I believe we're gonna have to do the same with the Saw building as well. Uh, which, we need to get to the Saw building, I'm, I'm working, in fact, Carol Glade, did she leave? She was gonna get some information on the historic preservation side of things, but we want to go ahead and start working on that. And somebody actually brought up a good point today, um, what was it? Window? Uh, I can't remember what it was, anyways, today I had, um, the door is just, it's all messed up, so I had Garcia, Gilbert Garcia from, uh, Valen come up and actually fix the door. So, I just went ahead and pulled the trigger and just get that thing fixed. So, he was there when we left today. Judicial report, um, fines and penalties for the month of February, we brought in seven hundred and eighty-four dollars in, uh, in fines and penalty assessments. And, uh, total year-to-date is three thousand one hundred forty-nine, and it's going up and up and up, I love it. And so, finally, that's knocked in on this, um, we were thinking about getting the, spraying the Mustang square, but you need a license, so I talked with D, D Tar about that, and she said you need a certification. They will volunteer their time, so all they need is at some point, whenever there's no wind, no, it's gotta be completely dead. They put together, uh, a public announcement that they'll have us put out. And so, whatever forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours before they actually go in and spray that weeds, they will do that.
How, that's like impossible.
I know, it's a challenge.
Seventy, seventy-two hour thing and then you're like hoping there's no.
Yeah, I know, our tree cutting project's still on hold because of that, it's been a year and a half, two years now.
I have a question, uh, yeah, I was wondering, are we gonna begin like a sign for that area that says like Mustangs?
Yeah, I was wondering, are we gonna begin like a sign for that area that says like Mustang Square? I mean, I think that would be kind of-
Yeah. And finally, MBD, uh, we brought in sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, estimated CDLs and DTLs issued, forty-five, one hundred and eighty-eight registrations and title with registration of sixty. I want to look at how much revenue we bring in in comparison to like, say, Estancia and Moriarty. And if we could actually kind of increase this, we might be able to increase it. Let's start marketing this and get more people. She's pretty busy, but at some points she's kind of dead, so, um, I'm always in-
This is a right-wing question, but is it possible to like throw like a dollar premium on any of those to like, for the town or that? Because we get nothing for that.
I know, yeah.
We get nothing. So is it possible to even just throw like a dollar fee, I mean, right there, you can make, you know?
We can ask her, but I'm just kind of curious. I don't think so, but it depends on the contract, actually.
We can just ask.
It would be nice.
I mean, it's only a dollar, you just think it's only a dollar for registration more, or we get that little bit of something? We just get nothing for MBD, so MBD is one of those positions where we actually, we pay everything and we get nothing.
Well, we do get money, but we only get a percent, like a one percent of that.
But it doesn't cover-
Cover costs.
Cover costs, no.
But I mean, kind of going back to the EMS perspective of us being a regional MBD, we are, are a regional EMS ambulance, we are a regional MBD, people come from all over the place.
I went to you and popped it. We had a good conversation.
Yeah, and that's where this topic was born from.
I believe that we need to get somebody in there as a sub. Like a week ago, it was closed Thursday and Friday, Monday and Tuesday. And I've heard some concerns from different individuals. You know, they come from different, thinking that this place is gonna be open and they drive up, there's the sign.
Yeah.
I think in, in the future, but not the future twenty years down the way, that we need to get somebody to sub when she's gone.
It's just really hard because you have to have someone that's really trained in everything. I mean, that's almost an impossible task.
Well, that's why I'm thinking about this as a regional-
The only, the only way that that's even possible is if you get a former person or someone that's like recently retired, that's like really going to be like, because you are gonna spend more on training one person to sub three days a month than you would on, right? It's just impossible.
Well, my perspective is-
We tried that, that mobile unit thing, that didn't, that was like, that didn't work. It's just almost impossible. And then as far as her, you can't, you can't punish someone for taking leave if they have leave, that's why we offer these.
Well, what I'm thinking is if we can expand our MBD and have a part-time revolts, she's there to handle the road, then we have our part-time that.
How are we gonna expand our, our MBD if we aren't, aren't bringing enough money to covering her position by itself? How are we gonna pay a whole other position?
Yeah, exactly, that's what we have to figure out and how do we have to position ourselves. Because a lot of, we get a ton of people from Estancia because she doesn't offer all the services we offer.
I just, yeah, I just, I hate to burst your bubble, but unless you can figure out a way to do it, I, I, it's almost an impossible task. It really is. Unless, like I said, like, it would be nice, like, I mean, it's probably too late now, so you probably don't remember all that, but like getting Diana, you know what I mean? Or someone that like tried or that had like-
Every time, she's like, I don't know any of this system, it's all new.
How about contacting, uh, Moriarty or Estancia and see if they can TDY a person so when Gloria takes off, they can come in and just do it for days as she gone? And then their MBD anyways.
Yeah, and do you know how many people they have out there?
They have three.
At Estancia?
Yeah.
You'd have to contact, uh, Moriarty.
Yeah.
I know the manager there. Like, actually, she's, does a lot of work here for the church.
Oh.
That's, um, um, I have her. Can't think of her name, kind of real short girl. She lives in Willard. She's the manager of, uh, MBD.
Okay.
For Moriarty.
Yeah.
Starts with a C.
I mean, we, I would just, I would just point out, I mean, we can try that, but I don't know if we have much success. I mean, would you guys offer someone that, you know, I just, I don't know if that will work either. And then another thing you have to consider is, why would they send someone over here when the people can just drive twenty minutes over there? I don't know, I just, I don't see it being feasible, but I get you wrong.
Peter.
I would just say don't get wrong.
That's what I'm saying, my granddaughter, she works every day and I'm, she works at MBD.
But she's at MBD now though, right? That's the difference. It would have to be somebody that's under the same, they're different.
Does it do a heavier system?
But she's trained though.
Yeah, that's probably the factor in her probably. No, but I mean, they, they don't use the same state system?
I don't know.
I mean, I know the difference between public and private, but I'm just curious. I mean, surely it all goes to the public side because it all goes to Santa Fe always.
I would, I would think it would be the same one.
I don't have no, nothing against Gloria, you know?
No, but they're, they're saying for when she's-
When she's gone.
That's the same one, she's not-
Grow the position. It would be nice to grow it, I just, again, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate and saying it couldn't stop. Yeah, that's all the same.
You know, like Juanita was saying, Diane, you know, or, you know.
Diane, the money system?
Yeah, I already talked to her. She's like, I don't know any of it.
I wish I knew it. Don't jump right over it.
Well, she's, she is hard.
You can get trained.
Well, she, she opens at the same time she closes a little bit early because unlike hers, unlike ours. See, ours, we do all, all deposits the next day. She can't because she does deposits for Santa Fe. So she has to do them same day. So she closes at three-thirty and that gives her the last hour to, to balance it, to the books and then go make the deposit.
Does she open there too?
No, she opens eight-thirty, third.
Does she?
Yeah, that's my, like, I'm very like, come on here. I mean, I mean, we can look at the possibility of opening at eight. And extra thirty minutes, I mean, I don't think that that would be a problem. I think that she would probably be open to that. I don't think that that would be an issue, we can ask her if she will. But, um, as far as the closing, I, I, I've been in there during the time like the four, the three-thirty to four-thirty and she's, she's busy. I mean, she's making sure all of her-
And whenever she has like a medical point of view, that's here at the clinic, she'll actually stay open there as much. She'll take her, I'm like, right there.
I'm sure, I'm gonna please everybody, I'm just, I'm just curious, I, I don't know. I really wish there was a way that, um, we can educate people on how to either call or if there's like some kind of thing, put on our website or it's green, they're open. I don't know, I'm just kind of like thinking, like, yeah, like some kind of something where we can notify, they don't have to drive all the way. But I don't know, I mean, I'm not trying to like be mean, but if I'm gonna go to the MBD in Valen, I'm gonna call first. I'm not gonna travel, you know, forty-five minutes and then knock it, and then it'll be closed, that's the middle, I don't know. I kind of think some of that liability falls on, or the risk falls on the person that's, that's coming. I, I just don't think that, uh, we're the same intention.
Because, uh, to me, it seems like it's, uh, reoccurring. Like I said, I don't have anything against the lady herself, but-
She pays it around her, two, three, four more hours.
But I mean, and the, the challenge too is, because she's the only MBD clerk, she's either entitled or required to be closed eighty to so many, eighty hours just on vacation time, plus for, plus for sick time, so.
That's what I mean, I mean, if it was like an abusive system, then that would be something altogether, but it's not. I mean, it's all, it's just, I know, the MBD is just one of those really important things and unfortunately, it's, there's nothing we can really. But I'm hoping to suggest that if we, if we think that, yeah, we can.
Kerry says she used to work the back of the day.
Oh, there you go.
But maybe, uh, don't just throw it in the back room, that, that, you see it, even if at the, at the end of, of the investigation, whatever you want, I'm college, research it, we need to look at it, it doesn't-
I mean, I, to me, I think we could grow it. I think the, the barrier is space inside her office to have two people, Kevin, two guests. Otherwise, I think it's stoolbar. I mean, I mean, the amount of complaints that I hear from Estancia, I predict they're gonna close down soon. So we're gonna get all that business pretty soon. Either that or they, they're gonna hire that, she retires.
So let's go to move on, uh, public input, um, you wanna get off and talk about that?
Michelle, you'll get the job.
Okay, roll call, uh, if you want to executive, uh, oneita, uh, motion, Richard seconded. Roll call, Richard?
Or.
Adrian?
Or.
Oneita?
Or.
Bernie? As per motion, roll call, pursuant to New Mexico State statute ten dash fifteen dash one, the following matters will be discussed until session eliminated. Personnel matters regarding the promotion of the chief of police probationary employees to regular employment.